Good evening, it's 7:00 PM, March 22nd, and we'll call a meeting of the St. Cloud School Board to order. Our mission is to create a safe and caring climate and culture in which we prepare, engage, educate, empower, and inspire all learners in partnership with our surrounding community to be successful in today's and tomorrow's society. Mr. Moes, would you lead us in the pleasure of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and would you knock our roll? Al Dolgren?
Here.
Jeff Polrice?
Here.
Shannon Hawes?
Here.
Bruce Hensches?
Here.
Jerry Van Korf?
Here.
Bruce Moes here. Monica Segudo-Schwarz will be joining us about 8 o'clock. Record will show that we are joined this evening by Superintendent Willie Jett, Assistant Superintendent Marcia Baish, Executive Director of Teaching and Learning Lori Posh, Executive Director of Operations Gary Ganji, Executive Director of Business Services Amy Scallorood, Executive Director of Human Resources Tracy Flynn Bowe, Executive Director of Community Education Adam Holm, and Director of Community Engagement and Communications Tammy Deland.
Thank you. First item on tonight's agenda is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda consists of non-controversial items that the Board routinely adopts without debate. Any single member of the Board may remove an item from the Consent Agenda by requesting removal at the time of the Consent Agenda is moved for adoption. The full text of items can be found at the end of the agenda. On tonight's Consent Agenda, we have Item A: Approval of Tonight's Agenda; B: The Approval of Minutes from Meetings of February 22nd and March 7th, 2018; C: The Approval of the Monthly Treasuries Report for February 2018; D: The Approval of the Monthly Financial Report for February of 2018; E: The Approval of the Payments and Bills and Other Financial Transactions in the Grand Total Amount of $4,082,059.3. F is the Approval of Personnel and Staff Changes; G is the Acceptance of Grants, Awards, and Donations; H is a Call for Bids for a Roofing Project at Oak Hill; I: South Junior High Secure Entry Change Order Totalling $975 (that's minus $975); J is the District Administrative Office Change Order Totalling -3,299.42; K is Quarryview Education Center Change Orders Totalling +7,913; and L is our New Tech High School Change Orders Totalling +141,287.95. Is there anyone who would like to remove anything from tonight's Consent Agenda? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion, Mel.
We have a motion, Jeff? Second?
I'll second.
Second, Shannon? We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Mr. Moes, would you call roll?
First maker of the motion, Jeff Polrice.
Yes.
Second maker, Shannon Hawes.
Yes.
Jerry Van Korf.
Yes.
Bruce Hensches.
Yes.
Al Dolgren.
Yes.
Bruce Moes.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to information items. The first item in information items this evening is our Partners in Education Awards Information Presentation. Bruce Moes and Nanda Viswanathan will be making that presentation for us.
Superintendent Jett, Chair Dolgren, Members of the Board of Education, Distinguished Executive Directors, ladies and gentlemen. This is the ninth consecutive year that the Board of Education, District 742, has conducted the Partners in Education Awards. The first year was 2009, 2010, and in these nine years, the district has awarded, recognized, and awarded over 250 awards. Nominees that were nominated by nominators in the district came to the event and were honored by the Board of Education for the service that they've done in the school district for that year. The St. Cloud Area School District Board of Education is proud to recognize the contributions of individuals and organizations that support St. Cloud Area School District 742 schools and students, and the Partners in Education Awards recognize individuals and organizations for their significant contributions to public education and student success in our community. This year, Nanda Viswanathan, Coordinator of Volunteer Services along with Jennifer Noble, Supervisor of Community Education, and myself have been working on this year's event since December. It's going to be held on Thursday, April 19th. This year, it's going to be at the Great River Regional Library. We're making a change this year, we're taking it out of the schools and taking it into a public space. Great River Regional Library, April 19th, Thursday evening. The social begins at 5:00 PM in the Bremmer Room. The program begins at 6:00 PM in the Mississippi Room. And of course, this is open to the public, and it is proven to be a very festive and prestigious event over the years. Nominees this year include Partner Volunteers, Partner Organizations, and Partner Benefactors. Those are the three categories in which nominations have been made, and we have over three nominations that were made this year from throughout the district. The Partner Volunteer category description are individuals who have volunteered their time and talent to support students, educators, programs, or services. The Partner Organization category are organizations that have provided their time and talent to support students, educators, programs, or services. And the Partner Benefactor category are organizations, businesses, or individuals that have provided financial or material resources to support students, educations, educators, programs, and services. And across all of these criteria, all of these organizations, the specific criteria are The awardees, the nominees must have demonstrated that their contributions have significantly impacted student achievement and/or student growth and development. Contributions have assisted the district in establishing and fostering positive relationships which address the multifaceted needs of our student populations. Contributions must have demonstrated a leadership capacity while playing a significant role in the educational affairs of the district. And contributions of the nominees have impacted the district in one or more of the following areas. They've promoted and strengthened the partnership between schools, families, and the community. They've improved the educational climate and culture of the district. They've been promoting academics, arts, athletics, and activities, and they've given assistance in financial sustainability. So, we encourage every member of the Board, since you will be participating certainly in the event, and all persons that are listening to this in the community and all persons in the room are encouraged to attend this event to support the nominees and the gracious contributions that they have made to public education and student success. My partner here, Nanda Viswanathan, has asked me to make this presentation, and yet his fingerprints are all over this event. He and Jennifer Noble have worked tirelessly, and I'm very, very encouraged, Nanda, that we're going to have a great event that evening.
Thank you.
Welcome. Are there any questions? This year, the Board will participate in the reading of the descriptors, just as we do at the retiree ceremonies where each of us has a brief narrative that we read about the retiree, so will the descriptive narratives of each of the nominees this year be read by a Board member. So we'll have that as a little bit of a different flavor and in a new wrinkle to it this year. I think it'll add to the festivities of the evening. If there are no questions, April 19th, come early, come often, and we'll see you there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation from Oak Hill Community School, Mike Rivard, Principal.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mike.
Good evening.
Good evening, Board Chair, Superintendent Jett, and Members of the School Board. Thank you for the opportunity to spend time with you tonight, sharing some amazing things that are happening at Oak Hill Community School, and we want to welcome you to our Oak Hill is a pre-K through 5th grade school with our current enrollment being about 685 students in grades K through 5. Oak Hill is a diverse school with 52% of our students being students of color and 25% of our students being EL students. These are the largest percentages of students in Oak Hill's 37-year history having those characteristics. 56% of our students are free or reduced lunch. Oak Hill is a community school with families and community members volunteering, tending to our environment, coming to our events, being part of our school each day, and we are excited about the changes that are happening at Oak Hill. Today, I would like to share with you some of the things our wonderful staff is doing to try and inspire and engage our students to be successful lifelong learners in this Thanks, Danny. I will start with a quick review of our test scores from the 2016-17 school year and then update you on the students' growth that is occurring in 2017-18. Our MCA test scores from 2016-17 included the following. Our overall school proficiency rate in reading grew from 59% to 62%, and in math, our overall proficiency rate grew from 61% to 63%. For growth in the MCAs this year, for growth in the MCAs in 2017, in math, 59% of our students had medium to high growth, which is a 6% increase from the year before. In reading, 61% of our students had this level of growth of medium to high, which was a 10% increase from the year before. At this point in the 2017-18 school year, we have seen some exciting data to share with you tonight. We, as a staff, have sought to measure how Oak Hill students are doing to catch up and close the achievement gap that we're seeing. With our MCA rates in the 60s for our percent proficient, we recognize that many of our students need to grow at a faster rate. Therefore, we are now examining star data much differently and looking for a year-and-a-half growth of, growth for our students, what we're calling accelerated growth now. Utilizing this star data to monitor accelerated growth, this year, we've seen 57% of our students in grades 1 through 5 grow a year-and-a-half in accelerated reading, or in reading for accelerated growth. And while in math, we see that 45% of our students are making this type of accelerated growth, which is very exciting to us this school year. How are we trying to accomplish this? Prior to the school year beginning, we, as an Oak Hill leadership team, recognized and chose professional development activities in a schedule that was rigorous for our veteran staff. We began our school year by learning and reflecting on how identity and equity play a key role in our overall instruction. We continued with training on responsive classroom in order to ensure that all of our classrooms were creating a culture where our environment and our students were ready for learning each day. Then from October through January, we went deep into math professional development with our district teaching and learning department, stressing the implementation of number talks, and working to improve across many different math strands what needed to happen across all the grade levels at Oak Hill. In reading, we have joined with other schools in the district in implementing co-teaching. This instructional model is designed to address the needs of Oak Hill in an inclusive classroom by having general ed teachers and our EL teachers or interventionists teaching together in the same classroom to meet the needs of each individual child. With excellent professional development this year and coordinated planning time that's occurring between our co-teachers and our regular classroom teachers, we see this making much more improvements for our children in reading, and we will need to continue to assess the implementation of this new model for us. While we continue to improve our instruction in reading, math, social studies, and science, Oak Hill still each year delivers music, visual arts, and physical education experience that fosters our students' creative talents, challenges their athletic abilities, and emphasizes physical fitness. Our students enjoy music and FIAD two to four times a week, and at this point in the school year, we know that 30% of our 5th graders are beginning their orchestra experience as they prepare for South and Tech. Oak Hill students attend art class at least once each week, and we continue to expand the visual arts to meet standards from knowledge of the elements of visual arts to using tools and materials, comparing and contrasting visual arts, examining the cultural and historical context of the visual arts, and of course, presenting our students' work. The pictures that you're seeing above here are paintings that our students have painted themselves, and these are on our walls at Oak Hill. At Oak Hill, though, we believe in our district's core value that everyone deserves equitable access to the highest quality of learning to maximize individual potential. We have implemented our Talent Development and Accelerated Services model to impact individual students and help each grow. We do this through academic achievement, high achievement placement, and school-wide Our academic achievement efforts target grades 3 through 5. We have Knowledge Bowl, Geography Bee, Spelling Bee, and the United States Academic Triathlon. At this point in the school year, 160 students have participated in one or more of these Our Spelling Bee winner this year was Samara Ahmed. We are very proud of Samara in representing Oak Hill at the District-wide Spelling Bee. Enrichment at Oak Hill also includes science and field trips, which provide hands-on, authentic learning meant to stimulate and enhance the love of science, writing, and creativity. We are completing our second year of total school cluster grouping. This model allows for an equitable access to needs-oriented programming to meet the emotional, academic, and social needs of each student. Our model is accessible to grades 2 through 5. Instruction is delivered by our differentiation specialist and classroom teachers, both of whom receive training for teaching high-achieving learners. Through our school-wide enrichment program, all students are able to experience high-level thinking and highly engaging learning experiences. Our three main goals are to develop the talents of all children, provide a wide range of advanced enrichment experiences for all students, and provide advanced follow-up opportunities for students to allow them to continue to develop their strengths. As you can see, many of our school-wide enrichment activities have been with all students assessing activities in science, engineering, and robotics. Looking ahead, in our Talent Development and Accelerated Services programming at Oak Hill, teachers are continuously seeking ways to redefine learning with the enhancement of technology, finding creative ways to have students interact with technology and power students into the future. We are very excited to implement more engineering into our school, and thanks to the help of LEAF, we will be able to implement mobile STEM carts to provide for flexible storage and movement of our robotics and engineering equipment at Oak Hill. This will help promote collaboration, creativity, embed critical thinking skills within our own curriculum. At Oak Hill, though, we recognize that respect for others and the self has an enormous impact on our school culture and academic achievement. In October, we celebrated Bully Prevention Month. All of our Oak Hill students were introduced to the Bully Prevention Curriculum and asked to voice their commitment to being bully-free. Our 2nd grade students marched through our hallways and led us in singing the anti-bullying song, which I will not sing with you tonight, to solidify our commitment on Unity Day. Students and staff lined the hallways and sidewalks to watch these eight-year-olds lead us in support of prevention of bullying, and as you can see from our picture, we choose kindness at Oak Hill. Understanding that Oak Hill's mission is to address the needs of the whole student, we strive to foster resiliency and emotional well-being with all of our students. We know that when our students can identify the emotional state that they are in, they are more able to engage in problem-solving and in learning. We have introduced yoga calm techniques to our students to help with this effort. So far this school year, we have had over 2,700 visits in the student support room, and the vast majority of these visits represent approximately 30 students who receive proactive breaks during the day and social skills lessons. Our monthly PBIS assemblies are designed to reinforce the students in classrooms that are working to follow our matrix of respect for self, respect for others, and respect for the environment. Teachers and UA specialists select those students each month to exemplify positive behaviors and are role models for their peers. Parents are called in advance so that they can attend. Some parents will come and go all out and bring flowers for their children to signify the pride that they have on their kids. Additionally, for our whole classrooms, we distribute ALL awards for those who demonstrate growth in following our PBIS matrix. To make sure all of these efforts we have talked about today will come together, Oak Hill partners with our parents and our community members to ensure that we're achieving our mission of preparing today's learners for tomorrow's challenges. We have family Muck Fund Nights throughout the year that further inspires our students to go deeper into their academic programming while bringing in parents to engage, to join their children as active members of our community. This year, three of our evening fundraisers have been Book Bingo. We have seen between 100 to 150 family members, community members, staff, PTSA, joining me for two hours of bingo on Friday nights. Now, while I enjoy calling bingo as one of those other duties as assigned by Superintendent Jett, it is the student smiles when they win and choose a book and have that special time on a Friday night at Oak Hill that makes it special to be a principal there. Our Veterans Day Assembly and Celebration is an annual event that brings in community and family members on a very special day for our nation. Our students lead the Veterans Day celebration in honoring them. They also color flags and write thank-you cards for our veterans at the VA Hospital and Care Center. On a personal note, though, this is an incredibly moving event to me as a veteran, but more importantly, as a leader of elementary kids, I find this to be an incredible opportunity to have our community members come into the school, see the greatness of the students that we have, see the future of our community in a way that makes them all feel proud. During December, we host our Oak Hill Avid Career Day. Twelve Oak Hill community members, ranging from parents to uncles to grandparents, come to speak to our 4th and 5th graders about various careers, including, we had a physician, a surgeon, an educational activist, a philanthropist, a database administrator, an engineer, a construction project manager, financial planners, armed service members, and this year, a district court judge joined us. Each student had the opportunity to take a career inventory prior to this date to help determine which Career Day speakers would best suit their current career interests. In the end of the day, the only complaint that we heard from parents and students was that they wished they could have attended more sessions. Each year in the spring, the Oak Hill community also comes together to help maintain our prairie by having our annual Prairie Burn. This brings Oak Hill students, staff, and parents, community members, and as you can see, our backdoor neighbors, join us to help continue to restore and preserve our native grassland plants. The real-life experience allows for an abundance of learning in our own backyard. With so many great things happening at Oak Hill Community School, I'd be remiss in not mentioning a few more celebrations. Oak Hill has been implementing PBIS strategies for 10 years and continuing our motto of respect for self, others, and the environment. For the past five years, we've been recognized as a PBIS exemplar school by the Minnesota Department of Education. This past October, Oak Hill staff and students celebrated our school being recognized by the Minneapolis Star Tribune as one of 45 schools in the state to beat the odds due to our performance on the MCAs. This newspaper award acknowledges distinction to those students who meet or exceed the predicted success on the MCAs in reading, math, or both areas. We're very proud of our Oak Hill students. At Oak Hill Community School, we strive to engage and inspire our students each and every day. We are a family, we take care of each other, and we partner with our community and with our parents. We know that what we do will impact beyond our lifetimes. We are Oak Hill. At this time, we'd like to present this year's Oak Hill Proud video, so bear with me if I can make that work. Welcome to Oak Hill Community School. Our motto of respect for self, others, and the environment challenges us every day to inspire and engage all of our learners. Oak Hill is located on 40 acres of beautiful land where we utilize the outdoors and our classrooms to provide collaborative activities for our children. We also place special emphasis on science, technology, engineering, math, and language arts as we prepare our students.
We do lots of engaging activities, working with phonics and words and letters and spelling, and it is really a fun way to watch that progression as they, as they move forward.
We like to engage students in learning with lots of movement, a lot of opportunities to use their voice, collaboration with others, to create great music, and to have a lot of fun while they're doing it.
Through talent development, I have the opportunity to work with some of our school's high-achievability members and to provide them an opportunity to really be engaged in higher-level thinking skills, being able to collaborate, communicate with each other, work together, and be creative to inspire them to be lifelong learners.
Typical day, physical education class. Students are engaged from the minute they walk into class to the minute they leave. They're engaged in different activities every day. Uniquely, they're, they get to take part in today, cross-country skiing, sledding. They're also exposed to biking, rollerblading... They're also exposed to biking, rollerblading, and have an opportunity for open gym.
Our students really enjoy the co-taught classrooms. They get to listen to teachers sharing their stories. They see us thinking aloud and doing a lot of modeling. Our classrooms are energetic, our students are having fun, they're engaged, and they're just really excited to learn.
I have been always impressed by the way that they can inspire children regardless of their academic talents or their learning styles and how they are so engaged and so excited within the classroom.
Seeing them experiencing something for the first time or realizing that they can actually read and write, it brings great joy for me. Knowing that I have three kids of my own, it's been a very easy decision to not only live in the area of Oak Hill Elementary School, but also send my boys to Oak Hill.
At Oak Hill, teachers really work hard to inspire their young learners, think about providing engaging activities that will help them grow in their academic, social, emotional needs. For academics, we have lots of rigor, but they're still learning with hands-on activities that just really keep them engaged and excited about learning.
Throughout the school year, we schedule different learning walk opportunities for teachers where they can join another classroom and observe what's happening in the classroom next door, the classroom down the hall in a different grade level, or maybe even a classroom that offers a unique learning opportunity for students in high-achieving classrooms or differentiated environments.
We have many, many different learning interventions available here, and we also have talent development, which really hits the needs of all of our learners at school.
Our media program is constantly changing. It's heading in an exciting direction. Beyond our diverse collection, we have mini technologies and manipulators for teacher use. But I would say what really makes that all come together is that we have a staff and community that is willing to use those tools to empower our learners in engaging in inspiring ways.
Oak Hill Proud!
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 Was there any questions from the school board this evening?
Questions? Bruce?
Couple of observations. First of all, I'm just so impressed every week with the quality of the videos and the AV that comes forth. You can tell your great stories in such great visual ways that weren't able to be told just not too long ago. So this doesn't get done just overnight, and it's obvious. I want to ask you if you could just, you started out, Mike, talking about your achievements and rightfully proud of the gains you've made, and then you referenced STAR data, and you said that you're going to go back into the STAR data and examine it in other ways now to see how that can help. Can you just give a little primer again on what STAR data is and how it's used and a flavor of how you use it to make other gains?
What's changed for Oak Hill this year is that we've started co-teaching, and with the STAR data being utilized, usually as a benchmark data for reading and math three times a year. This year, we've had the opportunity with our classrooms that are co-teaching to be progress monitoring them monthly. And when we were looking at that, we had the realization that with working with our co-teaching consultant that comes in and works with each of the schools that have co-teaching, that if we're really going to do some catch-up in closing that achievement gap, that we have to have a new goal of not only just a year's worth of growth, but a year and a half worth of growth. So we reexamine on how we're doing that, and during teacher talks this year, that was one of my main focuses. So I've tried to bring it just beyond from being those classrooms that were doing co-teaching, but apply it to all the classrooms. Does that help answer your question?
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
You bet. Any other questions?
Jerry.
Jerry.
I too was really impressed with the graphics. I mean, do that yourself?
Thank Mr. Land and Mr. Frost.
Who provides that support?
Mr. Land and Mr. Frost.
All right, well, good job. I'm really interested in the, although at times I found myself getting a little dizzy as the thing rotated around, but it was really nice. I'm interested in that group of kids that's growing a year and a half per year, and it's not a few, it's a bunch of them. And I'm wondering, and I suppose some of them are growing a year and a half from being substantially behind, so their year and a half is starting to catch them up to even with what we would call grade level, and some of them may be already a little ahead in their... But I'm wondering, for the ones that maybe are coming to us behind, what's going to happen to them this summer? Have you kind of been watching that? Because there's a lot of evidence that the kids that come to us behind or come to schools behind, if they make some progress, then they maybe lose some over the summer. And do you have any plans for these kids that are, to hang on to the gains that you've been making?
At Oak Hill, we've been fortunate enough to implement a targeted services program that goes two nights a week, and many of those same children that we're talking about that are making medium to high growth also participate in targeted services. Upwards of 50 to 60 students in grades two, three, and four do, and they're identified as having some of those similar characteristics. During summer school, I think Ms. King or Assistant Superintendent Bay should probably do a better job of explaining what will happen during targeted services. I know that this morning, we did talk about it as a principals' group and how the first two weeks, we'll be looking at some of these students who have had medium to high growth, and then during the last three weeks of summer school, we're going to be working on accelerating and getting them ready even further for this coming school year.
Because if they're doing a year and a half growth in a year, they're no slouches up here.
No, absolutely not.
They got behind, if they came to you behind for some other reason, and it means probably that they're capable of, if we would invest in them in the summer and then the next year and so on, that they're probably capable of just keeping on with that.
I would agree with you, Mr. Bay.
All right, thank you.
And you're seeing accelerated growth across all levels also, are you not?
That's correct.
Even through the top levels of the school that are in talent development, they're growing at that same pace?
But I would caution that I'm still looking to even improve those numbers. That when I see 57% of our students making accelerated growth, I would hope we would even improve on that. Jeff?
Hey, Mike. Just one simple question. You said 50 to 60 kids over the summer?
No, 50 to 60 kids right now are participating in our targeted services program. That's an after-school program that goes from 2:15 to 4:15 on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
How many do we have at Oak Hill over the summer?
It fluctuates every year. It's always been over 100, but each year, it can change just, it can fluctuate probably between 20 and 30 from that 100 mark. I think I've had upwards of 140 years back. This previous year was about 110.
What's the identified barriers to get that to 300?
Could you repeat that question?
250. How can we get more kids in the summer?
Oh.
What's stopping us besides finances? Anything else?
I think looking at and examining the schedule that we'd be implementing, and I think we're doing that, and the Teaching and Learning Department is doing that, to see how we can incorporate ensuring that students are coming in August, I think is going to be very helpful because a lot of families, as you know, are going to have done with their vacations and sports and activities. I think that will be helpful for those three weeks where we're looking to accelerate and get them ready for their coming school year. But beyond that, it truly becomes a transportation issue for some of our families. It becomes an activities that they have going on elsewhere within their family lives. That's usually the biggest impediment.
I thought that's where you were going with it. Is there a way to bring the education to them?
Well, again, I think Ms. King would do a better job of responding to the outside satellite programs that we've done this past year. Oak Hill did not participate in that, but other elementary schools did, and we were interested in working with the YES Network. But last year, that just did not come together. But that would be one of the, one of the ways that you certainly could do that, thus increasing the likelihood that those students would join day in, day out in those targeted services activities during the summer.
Awesome. Thanks, Mike.
Shannon?
The after-school targeted services, is there transportation at the end of the day then at four, or do parents need to pick their students up?
At Oak Hill, we do provide transportation for students to get home. Bruce?
Mike, great reporting and great job at Oak Hill. My question also deals with after-school, the after-school activities program. If I understood you correctly, were you saying that the academic achievement activities, Knowledgeable, USTA, and several others are after-school programs?
Those would all be after-school programs for the most part. That's correct.
But yet you had 160 students involved in those programs?
That is correct.
Yeah, which is excellent. And how do you fund those programs?
For Knowledgeable and the United States Academic Triathlon, we do have a separate stipend for those students or for those teachers that are facilitating those programs. What you're more likely to see, and I know that you received a packet regarding our data, what you're more likely often than not seeing is that our children are getting transported to those activities, but our parents are picking them up from those activities. The geography B, there's some after-school part of it, but a lot of that does occur during the school day, especially the geography B part, which Superintendent Jett has come and been a judge for along with the spelling B. But especially the knowledgeable part, or the knowledgeable activity and the United States Academic Triathlon, in order to increase our participation in that, we really have to look at different forms of transportation for those families who may not have it.
So you're saying the expenses for those programs are pretty negligible right now?
Correct.
But if you were to expand the numbers, transportation would have to be part of the formula for...
As I've worked with my leadership team and talked about that, that is what we see as the greatest impediment, especially on a Friday evening at the United States Academic Triathlon meet, which may go until 7:00 or 7:30. Some of our families would not be able to pick their children up, even though they would value the experience greatly. Thanks. Mr. Superintendent?
First and foremost, thank you, Mike. All of our sites, all of our elementary schools, all of our sites throughout the district have unique learning opportunities or learning communities. And Oak Hill is, we all just sat and listened to the presentation, listened to the mic, it's fast-paced, it's quick-changing, and it's a quick-change setting, and I think we all could see that through the presentation and through the data that we've all been examining. One of the things I want to make sure I say is Principal Vard is doing a masterful job, not just in my eyes or cabinet-level eyes, but if you go and ask that question throughout the Oak Hill community, and I'm talking about staff, I'm talking about parents, I'm talking about students, and more importantly, community partners, it's a resounding yes that Principal Vard is handling it and handling it well. So thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next on tonight's agenda, we have an activities update for Apollo and Tech High School, and that is going to be done by Dave Langrude and Andrea Swanberg, the activities directors.
All right. Thank you very much, and good evening, Honorable Dogru, Superintendent Jett, honorable board members, and our distinguished guests here, all good friends. And today, you're going to hear me talk a little bit about teammates. We're going to talk a little bit about coaches, and I want to thank you for this opportunity for us to be able to meet with you and tell you a little bit about what's going on with Tech and Apollo. One of the things that we're excited about is we're going to show you some information that we hope that you can take with you, you can go through. But we also wanted you to know that academics are so important, but activities along with that can keep a kid in school and keep him excited. The things that they can learn in life, they can learn the skills of loyalty, teammates. They can learn those items of being a great teammate, a great leader, a great listener, a great follower. We're all part of a team. You guys are part of a team. And one of the things that I wanted to do is, these kids that we have here, I wanted to introduce one of them to you. This is one of my kids that I've had for four years. This is Clifton, Clifton Patterson. I've known him for the last four years, and we've had a great time learning and growing together. So I wanted to bring him here just to kind of share with you some of the experiences that we've had together, but he's had because of activities. So when I asked Clifton to come up here, he said, "No problem. I can do this." Most of you guys know Clifton. He is probably one of the most charismatic people I know. If you watch him walk in the hall, there's about 20 people behind him falling. He's just so really good at bringing people together. He's one of my great leaders, but when we first got together, he had a lot of challenges. And activities was one way that we kept him in school and that he was excited, and I've seen him grow over the last four years as going to be one of the unbelievable leaders in our community, in our world. So I just wanted to have him talk a little bit about his experience with activities so we could share those with you. So Clifton?
Thanks, Dave. Well, I just want to say thank you, guys, for letting me be able to come and talk to you and give me a piece of my story. So originally from Chicago, came to Minnesota when I was, I believe I was about eight and a half, I was turning nine at the time. Moved in with my granddad around the east-south side area, and just been going here ever since. Started at Madison Elementary School, kindergarten through half the fifth grade, and I switched over to Westwood. And from Westwood, I went to North, and from North, I've been at Apollo. Activities for me have been life-changing, total life change for me. Personally, I love sports. Football, basketball, it's, I'll call it a passion for me. Definitely a passion for me, definitely that's something important to me. Coming up, 2014, I lost my father. Clifton Charles Patterson, that's my father. Lost him, passed away, and I was going through difficult times, very hard for me. Sports was there for me, especially learning towards basketball, football, my main sports. That was definitely there for me. I also had a couple of people for me, Dave, Justin Sculler, a couple of coaches, they were there for me. Basketball, very, it's something that released my stress, released my stress, my sadness, my grief, my anger. Something that helped me get not totally over it, but something that helped me push forward and move on with it. And that's definitely for a lot of kids. A lot of kids get great stories, different stories, sad, good stories, and sports can definitely be there for me. Sports activities, not so much even sports, something like choir, band, orchestra, things like that, things that Apollo and Tech have at our schools, at our great schools and our programs, that definitely can help these kids out with a lot of stuff that's going on with them. So that was just giving you my piece and my story. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
This is why we do it.
Can I ask Clifton a question? There's a lot of research out there that says the key for students being successful in school is for them to become engaged in their education, and that the value of an extracurricular program is that it's a place where a lot of kids find that opportunity and that thing that engages them in their school, and that ultimately leads to success academically for them. Your story sounds like an example of that research, certainly, and can you make a comment on that? But also, how do we get more kids engaged in the activities program? Because there's a lot of kids who don't participate who would benefit greatly. But from a student's perspective, what could we, as a school board or administration, be doing to...
but like, just a presentation, uh, sit down and talk, not necessarily even you guys, as far as teachers, as far as coaches, mentors that, that the students might have. Sit down and talk to them, just kind of express them to, kind of get them engaged, and kind of explain to them, and try to help them mentally, maybe, figure out what they need to do to be engaged and be successful, and whatever they decide to do.
What, what kinds of roadblocks stand in their way, would you say, from...
Definitely like people, maybe like, uh, struggling in school, they kind of, some people like to sit in that and, and grieve over that, so sometimes the people try to speak to them, explain things, it's kind of harder for them to like, understand it or want to understand it. So it, it has, it'd be a long process, but it, it has to be something that is possible for us to speak with them about.
Thanks for sharing your story, Clifton.
And one of the things I'd like to say about Clifton is he's one of those kids that is going out and bringing more kids to activities. He's one of our leaders that is teaching our kids, and he's going down into the elementary, he's going down into our junior highs, he's doing reading programs, he's doing those type of things. He's a leader to get these kids so they can see this as a mentor. This is the guy that is, is making a difference in our school, right here. And we can go out and do all that, but they follow him. And I saw that this year, more than ever. As an 11th grader, he is one of my leaders, and we're very proud of him. So thank you, Clifton.
Appreciate it.
And he's a good singer, too.
Chris, did you have a question for Clifton?
Well, Clifton, I just want to remind you that I think the best is yet to come. As much as we're all proud of you and you certainly have a great story, um, but the best in your life is to come, and is there anything you can tell us about your dreams or what you might be thinking ahead in the future? What's...
Um, I mean, obviously, college, definitely think about it way ahead of time, the better you plan it out, the better it comes when it times for it. So, um, my dreams, um, taking care of my mom, my family, that, that's all, family's all I got left, so definitely got to take care of them no matter what I do. So go off to college, go, uh, going to college for, um, athletic training, sports medicine, so get that out the way, graduate, maybe go back for something different, a business major or so. Hopefully play sports in college, but my dream is pretty much to just live life and, and live it to the best I know I can.
Well, I like that answer a lot, and it reminds me also then that it's, it's necessary for those of us that have gone on some of those pathways to remind other people that your dreams are, are excellent. It's good to have dreams, but right beneath those dreams, they have to be supported by goals. And then those goals have to be undermined by objectives, and then all of this has to be in a timeline. It has to be in a plan to, to do it in a, in a manner in which it's going to get done and not just remain a dream. But I think it's wonderful to have that dream, and I was particularly taken by your remark that, that you, uh, you're prioritizing taking care of family, and you mentioned taking care of your mother. That's pretty important.
Yes, sir. Clifton, hold on, Jeff's got a question for you now.
If you need help making that Australia dream happen, call me.
Gotcha, thank you, appreciate it.
Willie?
Just a quick comment, uh, because I know you still have more of the presentation, and so we've got to get to that. But you, Mr. Langrude, Dave, you made the comment of something I was going to say. So, I know this young man. How do I first meet him? At the barber shop, okay? Okay? Not for myself, um, but him working at the barber shop. And what you said, Dave, in terms of, um, he's a leader, you saw it, and I could see it way back then, not just in the school setting, what you just said, but throughout the community with young people. And you say they gravitate, but you get, he gives his time to little kids, and it's so apparent, and as someone who just sits there and appreciates that and watches that, thank you for doing that. Someday, I'm going to be reading about you, just don't forget us and where you come from. And I know you won't, so, good to know you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And that's why we do it. That's the excitement for Andrea and I. This is what we do and what we love doing. We have a mission statement that we truly believe in. We, we read it all the time, it may be cliche to some people, but I think it's important that you memorize this stuff, this stuff, and you just know it by accident, and by accident even. We have a quick agenda items for you. Um, we're going to go through some slides that are going to talk a little bit about statistics that we have, and I would be remiss in not thanking a couple of my teammates that helped us through this. Marsha Baish for her leadership in helping us through the start of this process. Uh, I also want to thank Dr. Huff, um, who helped us through getting all this, all this data, along with Karen Solars, and Tammy Lamb, and your staff, and Danny, did an amazing job with some of these, uh, these videos that you're going to see from us as well. We're going to talk a little bit about the statistics, I'll let you go ahead and read those. We're going to talk about the current co-ops that we have, and then I put together something in what I like to call the beauty of activities, we're going to go through that. And now I'm going to hand this over to Andrea, and then kind of give you the outcome or the purpose that we have here.
So, I don't know if that's on. So what we look at here with our purpose and outcome in this report that we're going to, to look at, we're going to show you how important that participating activities can be on attendance, discipline, academics, life skills. And then what are we trying to do, Dave and I, to boost and support kids in participating in activities at Tech and Apollo? And then, like Dave said, he's going to show the beauty of activities and how it affects the life learning process. We like to use it as education-based activities. So if you see here, the first with the statistics is showing attendance rate at both Tech and Apollo, uh, with the orange or red in, uh, being a, a student that's in activities, and then the yellow if they do not participate. The one thing is to notice with this participation, it is excused and unexcused absences. So it's not just, you know, it's, it's everything together, and the participants are someone, if they're unduplicated, so if they participate in at least one activity, they're counted here. So you can see, and, and I think good in both participant and non-participant, our attendance rate. Uh, the next one is the office referrals, and again, in red is the, for participants that are referred to the office, and that could be a, a major referral discipline, and you can see our percentages there, again, lower for kids that are in activities. And then here, we're getting into the MCAs with the math, of course, that's 11th grade, and you can see again, the participant proficient, 48% at Apollo, or almost 49%, 64 at Tech, and then the non-participants. And again, showing, um, that being in activities, um, helps with the, the MCAs. And then the next one will show the reading, and the same type of thing with kids in at least an activity, whether it's a sport or a club, uh, one of our, one of our activities.
This would be 10th grade.
Yep. And then here we get into demographics where we break down a little bit for the three years. Now, one thing to notice with the 17 and 18, we don't have all the, the numbers, we're just starting spring sports. Hopefully, we'll get outside someday. But it just breaks down with EL, Special Education, Free and Reduced, and going across the board, the percentages of kids that are involved in activities. So these are kids that are in activities, and the next slide, and this is for Apollo, as you can see, are non-participants and the percentages.
Can I ask you something about the, the way that the percentages are calculated? So when we see, eh, like, let's say Asian students, 47.3, is the, is the number of Asian students participating among all students or among all Asian students?
All students.
All students.
Okay, thanks.
And then the next will show up Tech's participant demographics, and you can see there again, uh, the percentages, and then moving on to the, oh, sorry, the non-participant. You can see we've got some work to do, uh, at both schools, uh, to get more Free and Reduced, um, EL kids in, in activities. And we're going to talk about some of the things that we do now, but it's definitely something that we want to improve on as well at both of, in both of our schools. And then our next slide, it just shows again, a little bit more, um, looking at female-to-male populate participation between Apollo and Tech, and then breaking it down. And again, just notice with the 17 and 18 numbers, they're not complete because of the, the spring sports. So they look lower than, than what they really are, because we're just, teams are just registering now, um, for the, the spring activities. So that'll, that'll increase as well. And then our next slideshow are co-ops, um, you're, and a lot of them are the same, you'll see a, a very similar between the two slides, but the Apollo's co-ops, you can see in the different sports, and you can see we co-op in, in quite a few sports together, and then Cathedral's in there, and then there are some different ones, um, you know, the Apollo's with, with Cathedral and Sauk Rapids and tennis, um, in boys and girls, and then, um, uh, boy's swimming would be a different, but the rest of them, a lot of, or Nordic ski as well. And then for Tech, again, very similar, but we have some different ones. Football, we're with St. John's Prep Wrestling, we've, we're with Cathedral and Granite City Baptist, girl's swimming, Kimball, so just some different ones, um, that we have, we have co-ops with, whether they don't have enough to field a team and then they co-op with us.
All right, uh, this is where we have a little video for you. This is where we start our beauty of activities. And this was put together, and we just wanted you to, we wanted to share this with you. You will see a slide or a part of the presentation with Clifton, and I think you'll know it's him when you see it.
Why I love being a part of activities and athletics in this district is the opportunities it provides for students.
We've got so many different clubs that anyone in this district could get involved in whatever they want to get involved in.
The gaming club has helped me learn how to play games and learn new things and meet new people.
Being in the performing arts impacts students every day, learning by giving them an opportunity to just have something different in their day. Uh, they get to play an instrument, or they get to sing, and really, um, just be involved in something that is, um, really interactive.
Journey Theater allows us to use all sorts of different talents and interests in different aspects of it, so you don't just have to put yourself out there on stage, you can also help improve by building sets, or in the green room by designing costumes and sewing or doing makeup. Or if you do want to try, you can go out on stage in either a large role or a small role, and just express yourself as a different character and be a part of a team.
We have so many kids that need opportunities, and we've added, uh, adapted softball this last year, and we have adapted, adapted soccer as well as floor hockey. And those activities allow our kids outside of school, outside of, uh, learning what they aren't learning at school, how to be together as a team, how to be together as friends, how to learn different life skills. So we'll talk a little bit about the beauty of activities. And again, I just wanted to show you a few things that we have here. Our state champion floor hockey, adaptive floor hockey team this year, they won state last year. What you guys helped us do, what you helped is let us have softball for these, these kids. They would not have had that opportunity. We had 18 kids have an opportunity to play softball that they wouldn't have gotten to do, and that's something that you guys helped us with. And they won the floor hockey this, uh, last week. We also have opportunities here, as you will see, that they can sign and go on to play college sports. This is bringing in families, that we have signings at both Tech and Apollo, and that's exciting, and we do it in front of all the kids. We have our French club, both Tech and Apollo, that went up to Quebec, so they get to travel the world, they get to see what's going on. That's an opportunity that a lot of kids get to do. And then together, Laila Washington, she's a junior at Apollo, she has the scoring championship now, where she has the most points at Apollo as an 11th grader. This was the basketball, boys' basketball team coming around her and being excited for her, and that camaraderie and friend that they had, the beauty of sports. We also have our orchestras, we also have our arts, with our dance, and we have our teams. Again, ways that our kids can learn to be together, work together, listen together, communicate together, all life skills. And families can come together and have joy together. The agony of defeat sometimes, how to lose gracefully. The team pride that we bring, and the school pride that we bring with all the kids getting together. And then, can you imagine, have you ever been to a sporting event where you've sat down next to somebody you have no idea who they are? And you guys are rooting for the same team, and they score a touchdown, and they make, you guys are high-fiving each other, hugging each other, and you didn't even know each other. Where else in the world can you do that today? Activities, you can do that. Oops. Even a Viking and a Packer can hug. Is that, am I going through a little bit too far? Want to talk a little bit about the activities we do have. Apollo has 70 activities and clubs. Tech has 68 activities and clubs, and they're all the same, but we try to, we try to mix and match as much as we can together and work together as, as sister schools. And then we want to talk a little bit about what we're doing to bridge the gap. How do we get more kids out for activities? What do we do? There's transportation issues, Free and Reduced lunch, they can't afford it. There's all these different issues. So one of the things I would like to talk about is one thing that Mr. Huang and Principal Abdi and I started working with when he, Principal Huang was at Apollo, we were doing community outreaches to the Somali and Muslim groups. We were meeting with them, and we're talking to them and saying, "What can we do? What more can we do to make things so that the girls can participate? How can we make this a better transition?" And they say, "Time." They say, "Just takes time, we need to work together." But we're doing that, we're trying to, to get with them and say, "What can we respectfully do to get more participation?" We sent down our families, our Muslim kids and some of their family members to a fashion show at the University of Minnesota. That way they could see what appropriate wear for Muslim athletes could be, and that they could see this and we could talk about it. We survey our Muslim girls and females athletes every year to see what more things we can do to help get them into activities. LEAF has come aboard and offered $1,000 per school that helps with our payments for physicals, for transportation, we get bus passes out to these kids that can't get home after practice. If they need shoes or equipment, we're using that money. That's been a huge help for us. Then, more than anything, we have students that take a step. They're pioneers. I was a swim coach for 20 years. I went and watched these two girls swim, and I cried my eyes out, because at first they couldn't even swim 25 yards, they couldn't, they could only make it down a half of the pool, but they were trying. They couldn't, they could only make it down a half of the pool, but they were trying. And they were there and they're going to make a difference. They're going to make a difference for all these other kids to try. But now they can swim 50 yards and they're excited about it. But better than that, oops, I gotta go back now. Better than that, we're learning from our kids. The captains of that swim team came to me and said, we don't care if we're Apollo colors. We want to make sure that we have the same colors as these two girls so they don't feel like outsiders. They were teaching us how to include and they were so powerful in doing that, it was amazing. That same swim coach has now started and we've started an elementary swim program that's hopefully no cost. It's a two-week program to try to get kids interested in things that they might not have been able to do before. We want to do that with all the sports that are kind of hard to get involved to if it's a cost issue. We want to take away all obstacles for these kids and that's what Andy and I are both trying to accomplish. The other thing is, I want you to have a little fun with this with me, if you can. I have a new team. It's a brand new team that we just put together. It's a new hockey team. And it's called the District 732 Engagers. And you guys were on that team. And you can see that we've got our captain, our chair. We've got all the teammates here. We've got our coach, Mr. Jett. We've got our assistant coach, Marcia. And you guys, believe it or not, have been in activities your whole life. And the things that you've learned from activities have brought you to your success today. Being a great leader, being a great listener, being a great collaborator, all those things. And I got a picture of you guys. And I'll make T-shirts on them. They're right here. This is the new Engagers. It's a great team. I think Marcia ended up looking the best there. And this looks natural, but. But you know, in a little bit of fun here, it's the truth. You guys, after every meeting, should high-five each other for the accomplishments that you do, that nobody oversees you do, the hours that you spend together. I've seen all of your meetings and your hearts for kids and the things, the legacies that you're going to leave as a team, just like our teams at Apollo and Tech. There's been a lot of people involved, but you guys have been involved in new tech, a legacy that's going to last 100 years like the old one. Technology for our kids to learn. You guys have been a team to make that happen. Quarry View Education Center, Community Education, the upgrades to Apollo, we've got a gym upgrade for our kids. I put HVAC in there and some people say HVAC, why would you put that? We're making it a better place for the new. So that's what I want to get across is that we're all a team. We're all trying to make this happen. And you guys have done an amazing job too. And we all need to keep working together. And how can you help us? Mr. Hitchens, Mr. Ho have put together an ad hoc group with Mr. Jett's blessings and we are putting together some recommendations for you and we'll bring that to you. And we're hoping those recommendations will be looked at and that's how you can help us. But the way you're doing things now, supporting us and being there behind us, has been huge. So thank you very much. Will you take questions?
Questions? Bruce.
Dave, Andrea, thank you so much. Thank you very much for this presentation. Let me ask this question. So imagine I'm a young athlete-to-be and I go to Apollo or Tech High School and my heart is set on playing a sport. And I try out for that sport, but frankly, I may not have the skillset and if it still is the protocol that there's a certain number of people chosen for that team and, but I don't, I'm not going to make that because of some limitations I might have. And so that I don't become a non-participant because I was so set on playing that sport. Is there some dialogue between coaches and the such where that kid, me, is channeled over to another sport? This is a sport you can do, Mr. Mo's or Bruce, if I'm in your school. You can play this sport. You have a chance. You're not going to be a non-participant. Does, do you work with each other? And if I wanted to be on the speech team and I just don't have the skillset? How do I get onto the robotics team if I didn't know about that? And are there those bridges between coaches and is that actively being done to talk kids into activities that they didn't know about or think about?
I know your soccer kid who went out for cross-country made state too.
Yeah.
Well, yes, they absolutely do do that. I'm thinking about, we've got a couple wrestlers, you might have seen it, but we've got a couple wrestlers and Carmen Schra is our speech coach at Tech and she's always actively recruiting. Well, she got two of our wrestlers to go out for speech and they got all conference, the other night at our conference speech meet. Never been out for speech before, but they go out and recruit. And you might speak more to it, but I think about, he's got a young man who didn't make the soccer team. They convinced him to go out for cross-country and he made state this year. So it's just, it was just the constant talking. I know our wrestling coach, if a kid maybe doesn't make the basketball team, he talks to them and we had three, I think, basketball players that went into wrestling and actually did very well. So it's, our coaches always work together at both Tech and Apollo and try to help each other out because, because of numbers and we can't have too many because of safety and so forth.
I appreciate that. I, it's not a new idea, but it's, it's one that we think about all the time, going to an event and there's a kid sitting there and he should, or she should have a uniform on, on another night, in another venue and be a participant. And maybe it's not an athletic event, maybe it's that, maybe it's that robotics or that, or that, any other number of things.
Yeah, from mock trial to newspaper, whatever, whatever activity it is. And I think our coaches are really good at that. They, we have some coaches that know that there are sports that cut and we don't like to cut, but if there's a safety issue because of too many numbers, sometimes that happens in volleyball, sometimes in soccer. The other coaches are there and they say, hey, come try out with us. Come swim, come do one of these events because you're going to love it. But we have the activities, we have the arts, we have all these things. And I think again about Clifton. I mean, here's a guy who's an amazing athlete, but a great singer, you know, and so if he didn't, if he wasn't an amazing athlete, he'd be singing in the choir and be just as successful. So I agree. Those are things that we try to do and hopefully we don't have to cut in sports, but there are a few that we do. And if we do that, then we, we try to channel them to a place that they could be successful and at least be part of the team and participate.
So I have a number of questions, but Bruce's question prompted something, some question on me. So how are the activities directors working in collaboration or in competition with each other? And so similar to what Bruce was asking, I don't know if you have been seeing this show that just came up that is called Rise. And in this TV show, there is a football player that wants to be in the theater company and the coach is very much against this kid being in the theater because it's going to take time away from football. There are many other things that happen in this show, but I wonder if those things happen here or how they don't happen here or how a kid that wants to be playing football can also do theater and these kind of things.
We have, I don't know if you know the name, Georgie Simon. She graduated last year from Tech and she, just an outstanding young lady, was the lead in our musical, Cat in the Hat, the Seussical, but she was also very good at athlete, basketball. And that was in direct competition. While the basketball coach and our drama director worked together. And so there were times where she missed practices, basketball practice, so she could be working in the play. She missed two games and they worked together and there were times where she missed drama. So they worked together. Is it always perfect? Well, another example, working together, soccer and football. We get a lot of our soccer athletes who are kickers on our football team and they work together and decide, okay, you know, when he can miss soccer practice and then always the request, you know, don't schedule soccer games on a Friday night when they're football games. So, so we try on that, when, for music, on Monday nights. I know the three Mondays that our choir, orchestra and band have concerts. I do everything I can in my power not to schedule activities on those nights. It's not always possible unfortunately, but then we work together with the coaches and the directors to make sure that, that the kids are going where they want to go and where they should go. It's not always perfect, but you know, we, we want kids involved and as many activities as they can be in.
And the other question that I have, thank you, thank you. I'm happy to hear that that happens. I'm going to disclose my bias first, so I am biased for arts. I really love sports and I, and I love soccer and soccer is mine, but, but I, but I, but I like to see arts more flourishing in our community. So disclosing my bias, I want to say that through the presentation, I do see a lot of emphasis in, in sports and I wanted to see the same emphasis in arts and I don't see it. So I wanted to see, I wanted to see more of that, more of how are we capitalizing on what are the important parts in, in arts. I mean, even the list of the events that you have here, I see arts very missing and I know that they are there, I just, I just don't see them presented with the same level of importance. And again, I'm very biased on this, so I'm not trying to make this a statement of criticism, not making a statement of my biases, but maybe, maybe there is, maybe there is something there about it. So I wanted to make that comment. And another comment that I want to make is about, when I was asking you about the numbers, when you're talking about the number of participants, so I was curious about, for example, Native American students because we have a very low percentage of Native American students in the, in the district. And the percentages that you're giving about the participation of Native American students are in relationship with the entire participation of this total of students. I wondered if, when you see those participations among those specific groups, if we see a larger percentage of that group? So if there are 10 Native American students in those schools, are those 10 Native American students involved and we're not seeing those numbers in the percentage when we compare them with the, with the rest of the population or they are not participating? So kind of was, wanted to understand a little bit more of the data.
Right. Well, I think we're just looking at, you know, what our percentages are in their participating and then where can we be better? Where can we go and go and, you know, Dave talked about some of the, the things that we do and then I go into some of the classrooms and talk about all the activities. We have a brochure and try and get more and more of the kids involved in the activities. Let them know, this is what we have. And then this year, both Dave and I will be doing a student interest survey and we ask them what they have participated in and then we ask them, what do you want to see offered at our schools? And then we take a look at that and, you know, are we, do we have a large percentage of students that want, you know, disc golf or, or, you know, some other activity? And then we look at that too. Not sure if I answered the question.
Dave and Andrea, back when I went to North and Apollo, I was good at everything, but I wasn't great at many things other than gymnastics. Some of my best afternoons were intermural level. Do we still have that? Because that was a blast. Do we have intermural sports?
Well, we have, most of us travel in summer sports. There's not a lot of the intermural sports within the schools as much as they're doing after. That's one of the things that we're seeing as ADs is that kids are specializing in a sport and they'll play it year-round and they'll travel and they'll do AAU basketball or they'll do the SCAB stuff. They'll do stuff that, that is more, more specific to one sport and they're not doing two or three sports like we used to do when we were growing up. So we're not seeing a lot, we're not doing a lot of the intermural stuff that we should probably, you know, boast or boost up a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, some of my friends now, their kids are in travel and it's very expensive, especially if you're travel hockey. Is it possible to revitalize intermural? I mean, it's a staffing issue, wouldn't it be then?
It is. It's not only staffing, but you know, volunteers and getting, not only qualified people, but people that want to continue to do it and be there the whole time. We end up trying to do some of those types of things and people don't show up and we end up doing it ourselves and it's not that we don't like doing it, it's just that we get, you know, a little tired too. And, but yes, I would love to see more of that because it would give kids a little bit more opportunity to play or try something that they wouldn't probably ever get to.
Yeah, because I was never at that level, but I, I had fun.
Space is also an issue, trying to find the space to do it. We ran out of, we used to have intermural basketball, we'd do intermural volleyball at Tech and we ended up, sometimes our gym is scheduled till seven, eight o'clock at night and then with, so it was trying to find Wednesday nights is, that's a good night, but then now you're getting into church night. And so just trying to find the space and the time to allow them to come in, but it's something that we definitely could look at and wish we could offer.
Thanks. Jerry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You may have said this and I may have missed it or it's here, but I can't tell from this what percentage of our students, all of them are participants. Do we know that number?
We do.
Roughly?
Yes. So if you look at Apollo, if you looked at duplicated numbers, and that means a, a student that is in more than one activity, there's around 750 kids out of 1,400 that are participating. If you take that unduplicated number away and say, just who's participating, we're at about 435 out of 1,400. So almost 40% less than the duplicated number. So we looked at it first, how many kids are participating? We didn't care if it was one kid in three, three sports or three activities. And that was a little over 740.
So if we wanted to provide activities for everybody, and I kind of agree, well, I'm not surprised that somebody went out and recruited Clifton. He's obviously somebody that you would want to recruit. I was a little guy and I got into sports because somebody recruited me, notwithstanding the fact, and you know, it turned out okay for me, but I mean, isn't there, unless we do something radically different, isn't there a limit to? I mean, how many, what percentage of participants could we have if we were world-class in that figure? What's, do schools have way more than that? And if so, is that an expense issue or a space issue or all of the above?
All of the above. I mean, we look at, you know, safety issues when you have a volleyball team who has 70 girls that are going out for volleyball and we don't have enough coaches to watch all of them and we don't have enough space to keep them safe. So we would need more facilities and we would need more coaches. So those are, it's all, all of the above. But right now, that is not an issue for us because we need to get more kids involved. We are lacking in kids getting involved and I would like to have that problem.
Have capacity.
Right, yes.
Right now, unused capacity and it's just a matter of going out and.
Correct.
Get them more, put this young man to work on it, I think. I think maybe you'll get there.
Yep.
I would just like to follow up on Jerry's comment and just make a comment, I guess, our Jerry's question and make a comment and an observation. I think that as Dave was saying, first of all, we have room for considerably more participants in the programs that we currently have. People always think of the programs that have to limit squad size. You know, they think of basketball and they think of baseball. But we have a lot of athletic activities and many more other activities that don't limit squad size. So if you're strictly talking about participation, in reality, we could have everybody participating, particularly if you add an. Particularly if you add an intermural program, et cetera. One thing I would point out, several years ago, in talking to the principal at Wayzetta High School, a very large school, had 80% of their students participating in the extracurricular program. Unduplicated number. You know, so, so I think there are limitations that we have that prevent us from attracting the numbers of kids, particularly kids on free reduced lunch, in comparison to their representation in the population, that could be addressed if we could adequately fund the programs. And there is certainly room for more kids to participate in those programs.
Monica?
So I think that it's nice that you want to go and ask the students what they want to participate in. I wonder if you have gotten, if you, if you have advice or a team of how you do surveys or your expertise in doing surveys. My fear about asking students what they would like to have is to know if also if they have had exposure to, enough exposure so they have a pool to choose from. Without exposure, I honestly don't think that they will choose many things there. And what type of exposures they will have that are also possible to have? Because what if they want to have, I don't know, it's key in the sea or something like that? So, so that we have resources to, 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 to come, not to create expectations that we're not going to be able to fulfill. So I wonder a little bit more about that process.
Well, one of the things that, and I agree with you, when it comes down to exposure, what we're trying to do with our senior high kids in every activity is we're trying to send them down to our junior high and to our elementary schools so they can be exposed to these different activities and sports. So we're sending them down to the reading camps. We're doing pep fest with them. We're sending our bands and our kids with their uniforms and they talk a little bit about what they're doing. Or speech club or any of those types of things. So that exposure, we're trying to get young so they know what's going on. Because when they get up to the senior high, you're right, they don't always get the exposure of what they need or what they might really love to do. And so that's what we're trying to do, is that we send our kids out along with our coaches to say, this is something that is a lot of fun to do. This is what it's all about. And these kids may never have heard about it before. So that's how we're trying, and I hope that I'm answering your question, that that's how we're trying to expose more kids to what we're trying to do in the senior high. So they know all the activities we're doing.
We also do a lot in the summer as well, trying to get as many coaches and advisors to do, I know our music, they do a lot, the drama with the different camps, trying to get more kids exposed. So then as they go up through junior high and senior high, they know what we have and will participate.
Bruce Sanchez?
Just if I can make a comment on that, and this predates Andrea and Dave from in their roles, but one of the limiting factors regarding participation is that we don't offer all of these programs at the middle school level. We used to. But when the school board eliminated the junior high activities program for a couple of years back around the turn of the century, and then added them back, certain activities were added back, but only as seventh through 12 programs. So both swimming, most of the individual sports, cross-country running, wrestling. Many of those activities now are seventh through 12, meaning if a seventh grader is going to participate, they got to find a way over to the high school and participate in that activity with senior high students. And there's a lot of parents who don't particularly want to encourage that and, and kids who are maybe too intimidated, although I know that our coaches do everything they can to provide an environment that is welcoming to those students, safe and worthwhile. But, so when we look at the impact that the board can have on activities programs, I would just point out that activities suffered significant cutbacks during the first decade of this century that really have never been, at least not totally, recovered from. And so involving more programs at the middle school level would be one way of getting kids opportunities in programs. And at the middle school level, nobody limits squad size. So everybody who wants to can participate in the, in the activity. It would certainly generate additional participants at the senior high level.
Shannon?
I agree that in the middle school years, that's the time that students feel very comfortable trying new activities. It's hard as a high schooler to come out for a sport the very first time. But we do have opportunities to, to add participants. And you look at the co-ops that we have with other schools that aren't in our district. So you know that our numbers are down. If you've ever been to a cross-country meet and you see Wayzetta there, they pull up with two school buses and they're full. And out they come and they all get to participate. So what a great sport to join because everybody gets to run. I just wanted to say thank you for the efforts that have been made to bring diversity to the athletics and particularly the swim team. I went to a swim meet at Apollo and it was just so touching to see that and so proud. And so many people out there in our community seeing that, too, that were really proud of that. And thank you very much.
So when I was growing up, we, I went to, I was in the Mountsview School District. And at that time, we had a very well-funded activities program. We had, Bruce, you bring up the number 80% for Menetonka, and I would guess that we were 80% or higher involved in activities. We had activities buses. We had two rounds of activity buses. We had the early round and the, and the ones that went later for practices that went longer. So, I mean, there were just so many things. We always had buses for any activity if we were going off campus. I mean, all of that stuff held true. And I think some districts still operate that way. They have that kind of funding and they have that kind of money. And in, in the St. Cloud District, I think we, we do struggle with activities funding. And there's no way that anyone can say anything different on that. And the only reason that we have strong activities programs is because we have a couple of miracle workers that work their butts off and make things happen and figure out how to do things and figure out how to get kids involved without spending a lot of money. And I don't think, you know, that we've, we talk about the special ed deficit over and over and over again. But I don't think there's any way that you can get out of a discussion about activities in this district without pointing directly at the Special Education Cross-Subsidy of $11 million. $11 million that we're taking out of our general ed funding and placing over for mandated services. Services where the legislature is telling us, we have to provide those. We don't have an option. We have to do that. And we take that money and we go over so that we can be in compliance with the law. And then they leave us with a very small pile of money where districts that don't have that big special ed population and big special ed mandate, they still have a big pile of money sitting over here. And when they divide that up, activities gets a big portion of that. When you look at the profiles of Minnesota school districts, and the 27 or so that we compare to in the ones that we rank against, we rank number 25 out of 27 in activities spending. And what does that look like? That means that for us, in our district of 10,000 students, we spend $215 per student on activities funding, on activities spending. Go right down the road to Recoree, they rank up at the top. They're spending $542, what is it, $500 and, I wrote it here somewhere, $597 per student on activities spending. Now, Dave, you made the comment that Leaf gave you $1,000 and, you know, you're very grateful for that $1,000 because that $1,000 made a big difference or makes a big difference? And I believe you. It does. But if you had $597 per student for activities funding in our district, you'd have $4 million more in funding for activities. And could you do anything with $4 million? Could you get more students to join activities? Could you create more, more enthusiasm within the buildings, more team spirit, more team, you know, school pride? Of course you could. So when I look at this, I'm not going to look at you guys, I think you're miracle workers for what you're doing. But I am going to look right at our legislators and I'm going to say, when you guys mandate that we spent $11 million on special education and you take that money away from our, our traditional students, our regular education spending, it comes out of places where we can do it and that becomes things like activities. And so we aren't able in a district like this to enrich our students the way that other, other districts that have lower populations of special education and EL spending, which is mandated, have. And so to me, it all goes back to the legislature. And when they're looking at doing their funding for the following year, rather than putting it on the formula and giving every district across the state the same amount, they should be addressing the special education deficit and giving more to our district and to Minneapolis and to St. Paul and Rochester and Duluth and districts, regional center districts who have high special education costs so that we can begin to make up some of that gap. Because the other districts, they're already spending $597 on, on their activities. Now they're getting more on their formula equal to what we're getting and everybody says, hey, that's fair. No, it isn't. We don't have that money to begin with. Our kids are getting ripped off because our, our legislature will not address the number one problem that we have in school funding. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Bruce?
Is it permissible to say amen, brother? Actually, as a former AD, I hope I can make one more comment. And that is obviously to recognize the work that Dave and Andrea are doing. But I would say that, to a great extent, our coaches and advisors of our programs in District 742 are really the unsung heroes of the educational experience for so many kids. And Clifton mentioned a couple of them, including Justin Skelrod at Apollo, and there's many others. And I've heard Mike Gritman, the North Junior High AD, talk about how they find money for kids to get transportation home occasionally and purchase a Metro Bus pass for them. And then the AD or the coach gets on the Metro Bus and rides it home with them a couple of times so that they can get home. So many of our coaches at the high school level and at the junior high level go out of their way to try to bring kids into the program and to support them in every way that they can. And they do it without getting extra pay and they do it many times at their own expense, ADs as well as coaches. And we just need to make sure that we're recognizing the great effort and forget about the wins and the losses on the, you know, and the scores, but just the great things that are going on in those programs. So, thank you.
Bruce? Now, anyone else? Willie?
Willie Jett?
Not sure if I want to follow up with what everybody just said. So the only thing I'm going to add to that is these two individuals here. I think their presentation was, it's an example. These two are trying to provide access and opportunity for the young people within our high schools and within our district. And they, they had information that was presented to the board, you know, they work with Dr. Huff, and they didn't shy away from it, whether it was the data, whether it was the statistics and who's participating. And they told you that they have work to do. And what I really want to say is they're saying they have work to do, but they made sure that the presentation is in front of the board, in front of district administration so that we understand that they know they have work to do, they're wanting and willing. And their slide ended with that these are things that they could need or ways to be supported. And they talked about everybody being a team. You asked a question about competition and collaboration between the two. And of course, there's competition. It's Tech versus Apollo. There better be some competition or else I'm getting rid of both of you. But at the same token, in that competition, it's friendly and it's about kids. And the collaboration that you see between the two of them at all times, whether it's co-op, whether it's, we have this program and could it work at your building or it's not going to be at this one candidate happen in yours, that is a continuous conversation that they have. I've been in the other districts, whether it's Minneapolis or St. Paul or the West Metro, the haves or the have-nots. I've participated in all the different things that we've all talked about. And everything that everybody in this room said, statements made, there, it rings true for all. I sift through all that at the moment and I'm just focused on what the two of you are up here doing and what you're presenting and the examples that you're trying to have for young people. And keep telling us what you need. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda, we're going to look at annual staffing timelines, projected changes in programs and positions. Tracy Flynn Bowe, Executive Director of Human Resources.
Good evening, Chair Dogg and board members. Superintendent Jett, it's the time of the year where we update you on the progress regarding staffing and what's happening in all of our buildings as we get ready for the 1819 school year. And so you have a handout that I left with each of you. And on one side of that is timelines. And so starting there, I think, is just giving you a reminder of what's coming forward to the board in the next month. I met today with Mary Broderick and all of the probationary new teachers in the district and we reviewed this so they understand the process of what's coming. The next action in front of the board will be on April 11th when there'll be an opportunity to, for you to review a motion for non-renewal of probationary teachers. Those of you that have been on this board and understand that process know that that happens each year annually because what's happening right now is our projections for the next year. And I'll emphasize as we move into the projections that they are exactly that. They are projections. We've been working hard with principals and we'll continue that work over the next three to four weeks before we finalize staffing plans. But numbers are fluid at this time of the year. And as we come into that first meeting at April regarding probationary staff, it's always, you know, a tentative plan at that point. And I explain to probationary teachers that those decisions that may happen in early April may change by the time we get to May and June. And so we help them through that process. So that's, that's what's coming forward in April. For tonight, I just want to review with you where we are at in terms of our anticipated FTE in each of the areas. And again, this is a report that we've done each year. You'll see in the elementary areas that those FTEs are based almost entirely on enrollments. And you see that those numbers look very stable. The only one that you see with a, with a negative number is in the kindergarten and that's purely a reflection of the lack of information we have about kindergarteners enrollment. So we staff conservatively at this point so that we're not overstaffed, but we anticipate that those numbers will come up and stabilize as we move through the spring. When you look at the, the secondary numbers and those changes in, in FTE, that's being driven by enrollment or by the registrations that are happening at the high school and the schedules that students are selecting in the middle schools. And so all of those, that's very new information. The reason you get this report, you know, it's hot off the press this evening, is because the, they just completed their registration process at the high schools and then they quickly have to translate that into schedules and be able to give us a look at what that looks like in terms of staff needs. And so again, you see that there's relatively stable numbers across the, across the secondary level. A couple of things that I would point out on the report that you're looking at, in the elementary section, under the elementary co-teaching, you'll see that's to be determined. This year, we had about 11 or 12 FTEs in co-teaching. You've all heard in school reports, you know, how successful co-teaching has been in helping us make good progress in our math and reading in particular. And we're working with all of the principals, Dr. Beisch and Lori Posh, to develop co-teaching plans that work in each of those buildings. And each building's co-teaching plans look a little different depending on the number of EL, special education teachers in those buildings and so forth. So as those plans are finalized, those numbers will, will be finalized as well. And we expect those to be those to be level to increasing based on those needs. In the secondary area, I would just point out that we've just completed a fine arts study. We've had a report from that study and are looking at some things that they've recommended. One of the first recommendations that we are trying to implement this year is at the high school level, to be able to have a full-time band orchestra and choir person at the high school levels. Depending on the year, those have varied between point-five, point-seven, point-eight assignments. And the study really recommends that we use those high school level programs to be able to develop visibility for our programs. And also, those full-time FTEs then would feed down through North and South programs that would help develop students from the elementary level up. And so we're excited about endorsing that part of the plan, and so you see some increases there in music from that respect. At the bottom of the chart is English, language learners, nursing, and special education. Again, those show up as to be determined. We've made some really significant changes that have come forward from Lori Posh's department and Kelly Frankenfield's work with the English learners programs. And the programming and the way we're delivering those services looks quite different for next year. And as those are being fleshed out, those plans will have a clear picture of what we can support in terms of those FTEs. There's no change coming forward in the nursing area, but in special education, we have added, I think Carol Potter presented that at one of her last presentations, that we've gone up about close to two hundred students probably by the end of this year from where we started the year. And so it does look like we'll need some additional FTEs in special education, but we're working that through the budget process for all the reasons that you've talked about tonight, Chair Dogren. So I think those are the highlights on that sheet. I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Questions? Jerry?
Jerry?
TBDs are likely to be plus TBDs?
In the area of EL and sped, yes.
And where would, and do you have any idea what the magnitude of that would be? I mean, order of magnitude?
Order of magnitude, I think there's somewhere, you know, if they got everything they were asking for, we're talking probably about ten FTEs in each of those areas. And again, we're looking for efficiencies, economies, way to structure the programming to be able to minimize that as much as we can while still meeting the needs of the students.
That was my next question. Where would the money for the twenty FTEs come from? Would they be coming from other staff being cut?
So, no, that's not the plan. So one of the things that will be coming forward to you in April as well is plans that we're working with in terms of the additional compensatory dollars that we've received for next year. The statute changed recently that says that the board can approve a plan to use compensatory dollars, up to fifty percent of compensatory funds across the district and not just following the students. There's some appeal to that in our district because of mobility of students and school staffing being somewhat unpredictable based on the free and reduced count in their building each year. And so we'll be bringing forward a proposal for you. But one of the things that we're talking about is holding back some of that new compensatory money and creating a pool of FTE that, based on a presentation to Dr. Byesh and the executive team, would say, our school needs this. And then we've got that pool of FTEs that haven't been allocated out in the regular course of business that are available to address some of those special needs.
I think we had a hint of this possibility in personnel.
Yes.
But maybe this is the first time that the whole bird was...
Yeah, that's true. And so what's coming in April is a presentation on that. And I think what we talked about in personnel is that we made kind of a tentative plan of that, and then the executive team has met with every principal and said, if we rolled that plan out, what would it look like for your building? How would it impact your ability to staff? And I think what we've discovered is that we really, it will work just fine, and principals are seeing that they get their needs met because we're just doing the allocation of staffing a little bit differently. But that plan is being now finalized, and will come forward to you for your review in April.
And I think it'd be great to have, that'd be something that'd be great to have ahead of the meeting so that people can kind of get a sense of what the impact, because that number of people is not insignificant, but...
Absolutely. And Dr. Byesh and Amy have been working really closely together to look at that impact and to develop that presentation for you. And I think that may come through finance, personnel, and, you know, in advance of the board meeting as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Shannon?
The kindergarten conservative projections there, is that typical every year? Is this unusual to have such a significant change there?
It's not. I think every year, in the ten years I've been here, those kindergarten enrollments have been more and more difficult to predict. That just families enrolling early enough for us to have them in our numbers and to stably predict, that has been difficult. And then where the students show up because of housing patterns and different things, we could have twenty kindergartners that were in this school this year, and all of a sudden in September, they show up in one of our other schools. And so we're confident that those kindergartners show up, we just don't always know where. And so as we're staffing the buildings, it doesn't mean, we've had about forty retirements this year of teachers, you know? And so we will have open positions across all of our schools. And so as we're making those staffing, we're just not filling every position until we start to see where those kindergarteners are landing. So it won't mean the elimination of teachers necessarily, unlikely at this point as we look at our staffing plans. But again, we'll be firming those up. Now, all that is not to say that you won't see a motion for non-renewal of teachers next month, kind of regardless of circumstances. You typically see twenty-five or thirty teachers on that list. And as you know, that then we often rehire some of those teachers as we get further through this spring and summer.
Jeff?
Tracy, I've been at the last two expos. I think they were great events. Is that helping us get the kindergarten enrollment?
I think that has been a helpful event. I'm sure Tammy has been tracking those numbers a little more closely.
The first year, we had a really, really impressive turnout. We enrolled eighty kindergartners at the first expo. This year's numbers were fifty-five, and that's hard to analyze, but we want to keep in mind that we launched online enrollment this year, and so that probably impacted a little bit. But yes, enrollment at the expo for kindergarten has been pretty impressive.
We've had our principals working hard with the early childhood children that are in our district and calling families where we know there are kindergarteners coming and doing their best to try to firm up those numbers. And we started that last year about this time of the year, and that kind of will happen throughout, almost through August. We'll be having the principals kind of monitoring and calling and trying to, again, firm up those numbers as quickly as we can.
Any other questions? If not, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next, Tammy Deland is going to come up and give us a preview of our district top ten and retirement recognition programs.
Yes. As Tracy mentioned, we have, I'll start with the retirement. Tracy mentioned we have forty of them this year, so it's going to be a very big celebration. May seventh at Apollo High School, the district and the board will recognize the seventeen-eighteen retiring employees, and Communications is busy getting those invitations out in the next week or so. And then the top ten reception will be hosted by the Board of Education right here at City Hall on May twenty-ninth, also at seven PM, and that is televised on our cable network channel one seventy-nine.
Thank you. And then next, it says that I am to talk about the appointment of board members to award diplomas for the Tech and Apollo High School ceremonies. And I'm going to do the same thing that I've done in the past. I'm going to say if anyone has any certain assignment that they would like, please email me on that, and I will get back to everyone with who those assignments are. We typically have two presenters for Apollo and two presenters for Tech, so we can have four different people volunteer. And if I don't get four volunteers, I'll appoint someone. But do that in the, I'm not sure exactly when you need that information by, but I will have it, so get back to me in the next week or so. Next on the agenda is a summary of the March work session and preview of April's work session. Dr. Marsha Byesh.
Good evening, Chair Dogren, Superintendent Jett, and members of the board. The March seventh work session was a full evening of topics. The first one was the New Tech High School update. David Leopold, architect with IAW Minnesota, along with Charles Eisenreich Tech High School Principal, and Andy Faulkner, ICS Consulting, presented an update on the progress of the New Tech High School. Mr. Leopold shared information and recommendations from the recent meeting of the High School Design Committee regarding the stadium and bleachers. Principal Eisenreich discussed the furniture fixtures and equipment workshops that had taken place with members of the Tech staff as well as staff from Teaching and Learning Department. There were also student representatives that were included in that process. Mr. Leopold discussed how furniture would be purchased, including advantages of utilizing contracts versus a bidding process. And Mr. Faulkner reported on the construction progress at the Tech site to date and showed an aerial video to demonstrate the progress. The next on the agenda was the Core View Education Center update. John Meyer, Senior Project Manager with R.A. Morton Construction Managers, presented a current progress update on the Core View Education Center. Updates included the brick and metal siding installation having begun, and interior construction and finishes are advancing. And the construction completion continues to be on schedule. Next on the agenda was Wilson Property. Gary Ganji, Executive Director of Operations, summarized a timeline and summary of events regarding the Wilson Building, beginning in 2011 to the present time. Superintendent Jett, along with Mr. Ganji, provided information and answers to questions regarding the potential sale of Wilson raised by board members at the February twenty-second Board of Education meeting. Other information provided included a building appraisal that was completed in 2018, broker opinion of value completed in 2015, a map showing the three parcels of property, the current lease with Little Saints Academy, and a Wilson revenue and expense summary. After extensive discussion, the board members expressed their support and intent to sell the Wilson property and directed Superintendent Jett to meet with the owners of Little Saints Academy, who have expressed an interest in purchasing the building to determine if they're on a reasonable price, and also to obtain a legal opinion from the district's legal counsel regarding the process and to bring forward a recommendation to the board finance and audit committee, and ultimately to the full board upon recommendation of the committee. Next on the agenda was an English language update. Kelly Frankenfield, Director of English Language and Cultural Programs, presented an update regarding English learner programs in St. Cloud area schools. She shared that our district is increasingly multilingual, noting that many students speak two, three languages, two or three or more languages before they even begin to learn English. She provided information on English language learner enrollment in our district, along with the representation of the various languages spoken by our students and their countries of origin. The students served in EL programming our students with limited or interrupted formal education or SLIF, long-term English learners and non-SLIF learners. Ms. Frankenfield presented information on the Title III program reviews that included external and internal concurrent reviews, data analyses, and district stakeholder collaboration. Areas of growth were identified and next steps were defined. Next on the agenda was a community education update by Adam Holm, who is the Executive Director of Community Education. He presented information regarding community education within our school district, sharing program highlights from various areas that represent community education. He stated that at community education, they believe in lifelong learning opportunities that embrace the quality of life for our ever-evolving and diverse community. Mr. Holm highlighted that community education team members are focused on our community and that we have a community education advisory council that serves as an advisory capacity to the department, and members provide valuable input and feedback from a community perspective. Mr. Holm also provided information on the various and numerous community education programs. He stated that community education is committed to partnering with our community volunteers and offers a variety of volunteer opportunities. So far this year, over sixteen hundred individuals have volunteered over thirteen thousand five hundred hours. He also highlighted the Adults Basic Education Program, which welcomes all adults seventeen and older who are not currently enrolled in a regular school program. And by participating in ABE, individuals can improve basic reading, writing, and math skills, earn a GED diploma, adult high school diploma, or improve their English language skills. Thank you.
Thank you, Marsha. Next is discussion and action items, and this evening we do not have any, so we're going to move right on through that and into our superintendent's report. Mr. Willie Jett.
Good evening, Chair Dogren, members of the board. The Slapshots Adaptive Floor Hockey Team are the 2018 Minnesota State Champions. After losing at the state tournament in the championship game the last two years, this year's win was, as they said, bittersweet. The team beat out Nokanapin in the semifinals, ten to one, and Moundsu-Irondale-Roseville in the quarterfinals, twelve to two. And then they faced South Washington County in the championship game, and they walked away with a thirteen to four win. So congratulations, if you saw those students in school, kind of excited. Actually, yeah, more than kind of excited. Two members of the St. Cloud Tech Varsity Dance Team were selected for the Minnesota Association of Dance Team's All-State Jazz Team. Senior captain Brittany Noble and sophomore Abby Glenn were selected for this honor. And the team performed at the All-State Saturday, the team did perform, at the All-State Saturday on March tenth at Eden Prairie High School. Also, St. Cloud Tech was also recognized as one of the team academic award winners. And with this, that's the teams that have GPAs of three-point-three-three and higher. Some, we had a student that was mentioned earlier today, a former student, Georgina Simon. And if anybody heard that, they were talking about that within the Activities and Athletics presentation. Ms. Simon, who graduated from Technical High School in 2017, has been selected as the 2018 Section Five recipient of the National High School Heart of the Arts Award by the National Federation of State High School Associations. The National High School Heart of the Arts Award was created to recognize those individuals who exemplify the ideals of the positive heart of the arts that represent the core mission of education-based activities. So that was just perfect timing. Georgina Simon. Also, the Local Education and Activities Foundation, LEAF, recently recognized and thanked community supporters at their annual LEAF Community Report and awards reception at the St. Cloud Country Club. Awards were presented for lifetime service, volunteerism, charitable donations, coaching, directing excellence, and instructional excellence. The following individuals were recognized. Mike Voit, Carleen Doyle, Wayne Jamelnik, and Carrie Cop, were each awarded the LEAF Coaching Advising Excellence Award. And hopefully, Bruce, I said that correctly. The award is given to coaches, advisors who demonstrated leadership, and they have been role models for others and benefit to those students who are fortunate enough to work with them. Sue Lynn Hasbrook, in the District 742 Language Immersion Program, was awarded the LEAF Instructional Excellence Award. Sue has shown instructional excellence as the leader of the immersion program for most of its ten years. LEAF also recognized six board members who are completing their terms on the Board of Directors. Mike Jane, Mike LaFontaine, Mr. Bruce Moes, Joe Mulling, Patrick Mulling, Janet Reagan, and Gary Standamo, all finished their sixth year on the LEAF Board of Directors. And as noted on this evening's agenda, Tech and Apollo High School graduations, and I think we just mentioned it, Tammy did, will be held May thirty-first and June first respectively. In addition, the Adult Basic Education graduation is scheduled for Wednesday, May thirtieth, at the Great River Regional Library. And that concludes my superintendent's report.
Bruce, did you have a question? Okay. Next up is Shannon Haas, and she's going to report to us on board development policy and governance.
We have not met, so we meet next week.
That was a short report. Bruce Moes, Community Linkages and Engagement.
Community met on March eighth. The linkage presentation was presented by Sebastian Witherspoon of Equity Services. The minutes for that presentation you can find in your notes I provided for you. And then we also met with the mayor of St. Joseph and other city officials on Monday, March twelfth. Bruce Hentges, Monica Seguda Schwartz, and myself. Met with Mayor Rick Schultz, City Administrator Judy... Met with Mayor Rick Schultz, City Administrator Judy Warens, Council Member Dale Wick, and John Anderson. We had a very spirited discussion with those city officials. There was an awful lot of good give and take that was exchanged between all participants. And out of that spirited discussion, a list of concerns were produced by the St. Joseph Representatives and noted by the District 742 Representatives. And those list of concerns were promptly given to the Superintendent of Schools. But they also offered up some suggestions to address those concerns. And so those suggestions which were addressed to the concerns they had were also delivered by our committee to the superintendent. Much of what they were discussing was in the area of operations and of course, our duty is to give that to the operational experts of our school district. Wanted to also mention that following up on that discussion, the members of the committee met and it became clear to us from that discussion that we as a district can do and probably should do a better job at making outlying areas of the district feel a bit more included in some of our dialogues and discussions and deliberations. So after some discussion, our committee feels that one way to do that would be to return to a former practice of holding at least some of our school board meetings in the schools rather than all of them at the district office. And instead of expecting folks in the outer areas of the district to drive into St. Cloud to attend a school board meeting, we would deliberately come to their area and would make sure that that community is aware of our meeting and invited to attend that meeting. So our proposal is to hold four school board meetings a year outside of the district office. Those meetings would be at Kennedy Community School, Clearview Elementary School, the St. Augusta Government Center, and a meeting on the southeast side of St. Cloud at either Talahi or Lincoln Elementary Schools. And these meetings could be used for individual school reports to the board as well as to provide an opportunity for community members to speak to the board on issues of importance to them. So this committee is looking to enlist the help of the Board Development Committee, asking the Board Development Committee to meet with representatives of this committee examining this idea. And along with the Community Linkages and Engagement Committee, the Board Development Committee, along with the CLNE Committee would craft a specific recommendation for the 2018-19 school year and give that to the superintendent. And hopefully that would come back as an operational recommendation to the school board possibly by this July. And Mr. Chair, that is the extent of our report.
Thanks Bruce, I think that's a great idea. And I just want to clarify, it wouldn't be one of our televised meetings, it would be one of our workshop meetings would be moved out to the, or four of our workshop meetings would be moved out to the schools. Next committee to report would be our Finance and Audit Committee, Jeff Polis.
Board members, our committee met March 21st yesterday. President was myself, Amy Scullerwood, Al Doggrin, Scott Andreasen, Manasseh Kouris Schwartz, Gary Ganji. We had some great guests in the room. Fellow Board Member Bruce Hentges, Andrea Swanberg, Adam Holm, Dave Langrid, Mike Gritman, and Janet Reagan. We basically had a very short meeting because we had some time constraints, but we talked about the revised Board Policy 742. Amy handed out briefly reviewed changes made. We added number five, number eight since the last time the committee reviewed. Concern was expressed by a board member, I believe it was Al, about number six and a suggestion was made that anytime an order is over 25,000 and we are using joint purchasing agreements, it should go to the school board for approval. Committee suggested adding a sentence to number six stating this and then submitting the policy to the Board Development Committee for review. We also talked about the results from a survey we sent out for membership of the Finance Study Group. We discussed those results, decided on, the survey decided on the appropriate number of meetings a year would be three, more if called for. Probably June to discuss the budget profiles, probably September to discuss the profiles, leveling enrollment, and then maybe November to discuss the audit. Amy, Gary, Willie will work on coming up with suggestions for new board members. I would also extend the invite of any board members know someone that would want to come to the study finance group, please contact Willie, Amy, somebody, and let's get some names out there. We want to increase the community membership. We want to geographically reach out to different areas. And then lastly, but not least, we talked about and had a great presentation by Board Member Bruce Hentges about the Student Activities Report which we saw tonight, so I won't touch on that.
Thank you Jeff. Next would be our Legislative Committee, Bruce Hentges.
I guess I better turn this on, Danny if you wait just one second on that. I have given copies of the minutes of our meeting to all the board members and you might want to follow along because we're going to refer to several bills that are moving their way through the legislature. But our group did meet on Tuesday of this week and again, that includes Board Members Polis and Haas as well as Peter Hamelick. And our first topic was the Special Education Cross Subsidy, which doesn't surprise anybody, I guess. And you know, it's probably, even though we keep talking about it here, we're not sure that everybody understands what is the Special Education Cross Subsidy and how does it impact our regular education. The AMSD, which we belong to, has put together a short minute and a half video which attempts to give a simplified explanation of what the Special Education Cross Subsidy is and how significant it is across the state of Minnesota. And we're going to start our presentation with that video, so. Thank you, Dan. Thank you. Simple but pretty clear picture of what the Special Education Cross Subsidy is. And as the video points out, the services provided for special needs students are important and need to be delivered. But funding those services is also important and that is the argument that we are taking to the legislature and so is virtually every other district in the state of Minnesota. And certainly if there's one area that citizens, residents of the St. Cloud School District could contact their local legislators to make a difference on funding for the St. Cloud School District, it would be to contact them over regarding the Special Education Cross Subsidy and ask for their support. Our committee then looked at special education and what the legislature is doing right now. And the first thing that we talked about was the Governor's Supplemental Budget. There is funds available that in the fall didn't look like there would be, that the state could use to support education. And in fact, Governor Dayton has made several proposals that would significantly bring additional funding to education. The first one is Special Education Funding. The Governor's proposal would increase Special Education Funding by $17 million for this fiscal year. Mr. Bonkoff is laughing because it's a drop in the bucket, you're right, but it is, it's the only money that's on the table right now in support of Special Education. And he would commit $43 million in the next biennium. Unfortunately, one thing we do know is he's not going to be governor in the next biennium and it's not likely that the legislature is going to take action on that. But he sets out a proposal. And interestingly, it is very similar to the bill that was authored by Representative Noblock last session. And so we'll be talking to Representative Noblock about that and hope to get his support. If you go down a little bit to the MSBA at the Capitol notes down at the bottom of the page, the first item on there has to do with two bills. HF 2846, which is the House File, and SF 2698. These bills call for the study of the Special Education Cross Subsidy. Both of them call with a report back to the legislature by January of 2019. There is a difference between the two bills. The House version creates a 30-person stakeholder committee, it's actually a working group, while the Senate version creates a 12-member legislative committee, six from the House, six from the Senate, and it is a task force. We support the Senate version because we believe that it is more likely to arrive at a recommendation with legislators on a task force that would be acted on by the next legislature than a 30-person, 30-stakeholder working group could arrive with a clear enough recommendation. So that's moving through the legislature. Clearly, there will be some kind of a study on what to do about the Special Education Cross Subsidy. Secondly, under the Governor's Supplemental Budget, he proposes the Safe and Secure Schools Act. This act would increase the safe schools levy and would include a one-time state aid payment of $18 per pupil for fiscal year 19. And then would double the safe school levy from $36 to $72 per pupil in fiscal year 2020 and beyond. This act, if it were, the Governor's proposal were adopted, would bring in about $200,000 to District 742 that we could use for building, remodeling in order to create safe schools or for hiring personnel. Whether it be school counselors or psychologists or whatever it is that we would deem would be most likely to help create an even safer school environment than we currently have. And then the third Governor's proposal that is important for District 742 is the voluntary pre-K and school readiness plus funding. This is of course, the Governor's legacy issue has been, he has been pressing voluntary pre-K, universal voluntary pre-K throughout his term. He proposes an additional $240,000 in this legislative session in order to pay for some administrative help at MDE to oversee the program. And then his funding plan would increase the number of students eligible for voluntary preschool by 5% each year in the future. One other of his proposals that actually I didn't include here, but it's an interesting one, I think potentially for District 742, is his homework starts with home proposal. Homework starts with home. And it is a proposal that would provide $4 million for rental assistance for up to 500 families statewide who are experiencing homelessness or under the threat of homelessness. And of course, we are well aware that in District 742, that there are families in that situation and it could help potentially to provide a shelter for some of these children or for families to keep their home or apartment. And then looking down at some of the other legislative bills, HF 3320, whose companion bill is SF 2754, is the Safe Schools Levy and Long-Term Facilities Maintenance and Mental Health Levies. These are both bills coming through the legislature that do similar things to what the Governor is proposing. I think that it's pretty clear that there will be some funds that will, the legislature will pass that will allow school districts to increase the safety of the buildings, of our buildings. And then the pensions bill, TRA, as I think everybody is aware, has been a threat to the financial security frankly of school districts. And it appears as though a compromise has been arrived at and that the funding will come from the state to pay the employer part of the fix to TRA and other pensions in the district. In addition, employees will experience a 0.25% increase in their contributions. They'll be changing the assumed rate on the investments from 8.5% to 7.5%. And those actions all taken together will create a fully funded or at least 92% funded pension fund within 30 years. One of the bills that we would oppose is included in the House Policy Omnibus Education Bill. The House has already put together their education omnibus bill. And this bill calls for the creation of a rating system, a five-star rating system for schools across the state of Minnesota based on MCA scores from 1 to 5. It is opposed by MSBA and it's opposed by AMSD and we will be expressing our disapproval with that plan also. And then finally HF 1420 and SF 1470, both deal with the attempt to merge the Every Student Succeeds Act and World's Best Workforce Act reporting. So that districts have only one report to make at the MSBA Day at the Legislature. They pointed out this is a work in progress. MSBA is not sure if they support it yet. I expect I might find out more from ASD tomorrow, AMSD tomorrow morning at our meeting. Couple of other bills of note. HF 3180, it's only been introduced in the House so far by Representative Mariana, would increase English learner concentration allowance to $500 per student and double the concentration factor to 23% of total students. That would bring in approximately $7 million for EL programming statewide. Our own EL Director, Kelly Frankenfield, made a presentation at the legislature on this and she says that it would bring in for us, I believe it was $2 million, $250 per pupil is what we would benefit from this. So we will support that, but there's no Senate companion to that right now. And then Representative Tice has introduced the Support Our Students Grant Program Funding. It's a bill that would provide funding for school counselors. Again, limited amount of money, actually $13 million statewide that we would have to. to apply for grants to get additional counselors. So our focus again will be along our three goals, to eliminate the special education cross subsidy, adequately fund education by approving the governor's Safe and Secure Schools Act proposal, and the pension reform legislation. And then our goal number three, which is evaluate the use of assessments and high-stakes testing, we will take a stand against the five-star rating system that is currently proposed in the House omnibus bill. So that's where the Legislative Committee is right now.
Thank you, Bruce. Bruce has a question.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Hanches, thank you very much, and we can always be grateful for every effort that's being made by every legislator and governor. Yet, it's the number that rings out tonight, and so clearly stated by the chair earlier tonight, was that this state has a $700 million
Cross subsidy.
Cross subsidy deficit, and this district has an $11 million cross education subsidy district. I posed the question, I'm not the first one to ask this, when do you suppose the associations representing school boards, MSBA, associations representing superintendents, school administrators, teachers' associations, when will the state of Minnesota be sued? Be sued for this? Is that even a possibility?
Is it an idea? I think it's an idea at this table, actually, but it's, and Mr. Von Korf, you certainly can talk about this if you want. The reality of it is that, as of right now, the only money that is on the table to deal with the special education cross subsidy is the $17 million for this next year by the governor. The legislature is shifting the thing to either a task force or a working group to study for a year how to address the cross subsidy. My concern, as is yours, is that this is a delaying tactic, and that the focus will be on trying to reduce the costs of special education, which we know that we've already reviewed, rather than addressing the revenue needed for those programs. So at some point, people will get desperate enough, perhaps, that there would be a court case.
Jerry?
Well, you know, that I can add to this is, first of all, in the first part of my board service, I was involved in the special education wars at the legislature, trying to, along with others, but I mean, we were part of a statewide effort that led to the 2007, what I would now call a temporary minor fix to that problem. And following that, I was part of a seminar at William Mitchell. I co-taught a seminar at William Mitchell that involved law students and representatives from all of the major school organizations to talk about the Constitution as it applies to this issue. And I, both of those experiences put together convinced me that we will never see any significant action on special education deficit without a lawsuit. And part of the problem is that there are school districts who are with us in spirit, but who think that the addition of money to the special education cross subsidy will involve a subtraction for them some way. They can't believe, and so there's a number of school districts that really are ambivalent about seeing this problem solved, even though everybody's with us in spirit. But I just, I just, systemically, I don't believe that we're ever going to see this problem. I think it's a kind of a tragedy, both on the legal side, that is, the lawyers in Minnesota, and the school districts in Minnesota, that we've had three lawsuits on constitutional issues, and none of them have really addressed the major systemic problems. They've all been little lawsuits about little things, and I do think that we're going to live with this permanently. The political will is not there until there is a suit.
Until there is a suit?
Until there is a suit.
The, I think that issue was discussed by pretty much every educational association this year, in terms of how do you approach this, and do you threaten a lawsuit at this point? And it seems as though everybody arrived at, keep the pressure on, get a task force, and give it a year to come up with a solution, and then perhaps go to Plan B.
That's the third time, this will now be the third time that this strategy has been adopted.
I know. It's, yeah.
Thank you, Bruce. Next, we have Monica Segura Schwartz with the Personnel and Negotiations Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Board Personnel Negotiations Committee met in March 6. We discussed the executive contract renewals and had a summary. We decided at that moment that we were ready, we will be ready to present it at the next board meeting, that was the last work session where we did present it there and was submitted to vote. We also checked our documents about the groups that had been settled to that point. I think that there are some more groups that have settled already since then. At that moment, we were looking at the teachers, bus drivers, sign language interpreters, but professionals, non-representative hourly employees, non-representative staff employees, and directors. And, and what was the other thing? And I think that that was, that was all we did. We also looked at a comparison between the executive renewal, the contract of the executive renewal with the principal's contract. So that was all what we checked.
Thank you. And next, we have the Achievement, Integration, and Equity Committee, Jerry Von Korf.
Mr. Chair, usually, committee chair reports are about what we have done, but I, tonight I want to say a few words about some issues that I think need attention in the Achievement Committee, and the Board Development Committee, and by the superintendent and the full board. And because I'm hoping to do something on the committee, and I'm hoping that there'll be another committee looking at this, I just want to say what that's about so that, so that the board can be part of this discussion, not tonight, but over the long haul. Last year, when we adopted the Minnesota School Board Association's model policies, there's a list of those policies that they consider mandatory policies, and they call them mandatory because they're implementing things that are required by law. We skipped over Board Policy Number 16. We omitted that from our consideration, and I've provided in the packet that I left with you a copy of what that policy is, the one that we've skipped over. And I don't want to cry over still melt, we skipped over it, but the main point I want to make is that we've got to fix that now. There's no reason why we shouldn't push forward. There is an excellent policy, it's required by law, it's last revised by Minnesota School Board Association, 2016. This is the policy that implements the statutory mandate that there be community involvement in the World's Best Workforce process, and that that community involvement be embodied in the Curriculum Advisory Committee. It has requirements for diversity in the Curriculum Advisory Committee, and it demands that that process be integrated, that it be part of our strategic plan. And so that, and to the credit of the folks over here, a dialogue has begun at the Curriculum Advisory Committee of a quality that I think is really helpful. But I just would hope that we not dally anymore in moving this policy along. As I say, there's, there's no good reason why the board couldn't see it and read it, and so on and so forth. I just want to say a few words about why I think that policy is so important, besides the fact that it's against the law not to implement it. It is the core statute designed by the legislature to assure a orderly process in developing the strategic goals in the central feature of our district, which is education. And, you know, there could be other ways of doing it, but the statute requires this one. So that's one point I want to make. At the, I've been liaison to the, what I keep calling the Curriculum Advisory Committee, because that's what it was back when I started, but the Teaching and Learning Advisory Committee, which is the statutory body that fits into this policy. And we had a really interesting discussion that followed on a similar discussion we had the time before. The members of that committee, the citizen members, don't quite clearly, quite, they can't quite figure out what it is they're supposed to be doing. And we haven't, we haven't shown them this policy until recently, which is good, good that we've done it, but we're all struggling with what it is that the procedure should be as we implement this new policy. Several of them have said, you know, I come to these meetings and I'm not prepared to deal with the things you're throwing at me, and I would really like to. I'm not an educator, but I would like to, I would like to be a representative of the community in this. A woman who's on the committee and been on the committee a while, but who is on the advisory, who is at the technical college, said that at the technical college, their advisory committee is considered central to their evaluation of whether they're meeting the needs of the community. Now, it's slightly different because, you know, those people tend to be consumers of their graduates, but she said, we don't have the same atmosphere here. And a couple, a couple of people said, we're bringing everything to the committee, and really, we can't do everything well. We should maybe consider, and then finally, and I've heard this on several occasions, people don't really understand, and we haven't really come to grips with, I mean, it's nobody's fault, we just haven't talked about it, what is the relationship of that committee to the board? The statute says that they shall make recommendations to the board, and they're not feeling that they're doing that. Do you see what I mean? If we're, we're looking at something that they're supposed to make recommendations on, nobody comes, we're told that they talked about it, but we're not told what they said. Yes, we like it, no, we don't like it, whatever. A couple people said, and I think we're making great progress on that, that they don't want to see things at the end of the process. They'd like to see things at the beginning of the process so that they can have their feedback and be ready, and when we get to the end of the process. And we've done this, we, you've done this in the arts. They saw arts, and now they're going to see it again, and I think that's going to be more productive. We are not, not, not diverse in that committee. We are basically white people, and the citizen members are 99% women, there's a couple guys that come every once in a while, and of course, that's because of the historic connection that women have to education, but, but we, as hard as we may have tried, we're not diverse, and the law doesn't allow us to be not diverse. And there are things, I believe, that we can do to change that, and I think it begins with having the community believe that this committee makes a difference.
Yes.
And so I'm not going to come, if I'm, if I'm not sure that the district is, is, cares about me unfairly, maybe, but I'm not going to go to a committee and be not listened to again.
And my input's not.
And so there's some theater, I think, involved in that, in trying to convince people that when they come, what we're going to do, they're going to do. And then, you know, we're all ticked off because the newspaper and the state are putting numbers that they devise for how we're doing, right? And they're calculating our performance based on percentages of things that we know are statistically invalid. This process could be, should be, a way to present ourselves as having a different measurement system that is valid and has community support. And I think we're, we're in danger of conceding to the people down in St. Paul who don't seem to know statistics, how we are going to look to the community. And I think this, this process also has an opportunity to get control of our own message. So there you are, it's a big topic. I just, I'm going to be doing everything I can to try and push the two committees that might be looking at this, and then the whole board, to move this along, because I think it's really, really important that, we skipped it last year, but let's, let's get it done now. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Next, for future agenda items, at our next workshop, we're going to be having a New Tech High School update, a Quarryview Education Center update, and an update on our new administrative offices and remodeling there. We will also be looking at the Partnerships Vision Card. Those are the topics for the next work session. And just a heads up for the next televised board meeting, for anyone that's watching that's interested, we are going to have a presentation on security, and we talked about that, I believe, two meetings ago, just a little bit, but we will be talking about some of the security, not so much methods, but some of the security, things that we do within our district to help protect and make sure that our kids are safe. Also, a little point of order here for those of us who have these laptops, probably is best if, when you go into your own email, if you don't click for the computer to save the password, and if you do go into the email, make sure you log out before you shut the thing down at the end of the evening. So I just, we don't seem to be getting the same ones every time, so when I logged in on this one tonight, I noticed it went into someone else's email automatically. So I logged out and went into my own, because I really didn't want to be in theirs, but just a note on that. And if there is nothing else, does anyone have anything else that they would like to add at this point? If not, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.